Uh, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, may we get a roll call, please?
Jeff Swike?
Here.
Christopher Mellon, absent. Pete Gipp here. William Byers?
Here.
Tim Fortier?
Here.
Four present, one absent.
Very good, thank you. And we have minutes from our April meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, we'll approve the minutes. All right. Do we have any communications?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. In that case, um, I will call the cases by case number and name of petitioner. I would ask that you come forward, state your name and address for public record, at which time you will be given the opportunity to present your case accompanied by any professionals that you may have with you. After that, we will have a staff report pertaining to each case presented this evening. We will then have a question and answer period for the board members. We will then open the floor for comments, not questions, from the audience. If you are desirous to speak for or against any case, we ask that you please sign in at the registry in the center aisle. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. The board will then render a decision either for or against, ask for a deferral for more information or for other reasons which we will state, or the board will make no recommendation to the town council. At this time, would you please silence any communication devices that you have with you? Thank you very much. Okay, under old business, we have case Z one zero V two dash zero four two five, Regent Bros. Lot thirty-seven, thirty-eight LLC petitioner and owner, located at Lot thirty-seven Wright Street, Lake County, Indiana. Variance from developmental standards approval on thirty-four thousand five hundred and sixty square feet in an M-one limited industrial zoning district from section twenty-one dash one seven two B seven to allow partial stone surface and section twenty-one dash one three seven to reduce the north side yard setback from twenty feet to five feet to allow a flex office warehouse. Welcome back.
Good evening, Carlos Ruiz, nine twelve West Avenue H, Griffith, Indiana, is our home office. Region contractors and also the owner of said property. We have two of them that were asked for. Last meeting, you requested us to get the paperwork finalized and ordered with Buckeye Pipeline. We have that, I believe you have copies of it, we turned it in to Sheila. You also requested that we mark the corners of the property so you could see the boundaries of what we're looking for and asking for. Other than that, we feel like we have everything in place, and then if I could answer any questions from you guys who went out and seen the property.
Can we get a staff report, please?
Petitioners requesting a variance from development standards from section twenty-one dash one seventy-two. Hold on one second, I'm sorry. We should be on thirty-seven.
Yes, ma'am, first time.
Sorry. Petitioners requesting a variance from development standards from section twenty-one dash one seventy-two B seven to allow for a partial stone surface in lieu of pavement and section twenty-one dash one thirty-seven to reduce the north side yard setback from twenty to five feet in an M-one industrial zoning district on forty-three five hundred and sixty square feet to allow a flex office warehouse to be built on property. Petitioner was deferred on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, and requested to have the encroachment agreement in place. The agreement has been recorded at the Lake County Recorder's Office.
All right, thank you, I'll bring it to the board for questions. I think we'd like to hear from our attorney first regarding the agreement that you have with the pipeline company.
Okay. Um, I'm covering for Joe Svetinoff today. I had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Svetinoff, who advised me that he did review the agreement. Essentially, I'm, I'm just speaking for Joe here, but he wanted to be clear that while it was his understanding, you know, the agreement looked valid, it's between two private entities that don't involve the, the town of Maryville, so he wanted to just put forward for everyone that, uh, the town would not need to take any official position on the agreement itself.
Okay.
And he wanted me to emphasize that here today for him, for the town.
We just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of it and paid your blessing, more or less.
Okay. Did everyone have a chance to get out and look at the properties?
Yep, going out there today.
No, okay.
I got a couple of questions, okay. Uh, number one, it says the five feet, uh, is that the twenty feet on the north side of the property?
That is on the very far north facing the pond, I would call it, the detention pond.
Okay, so the only thing that's north of it is the pond?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Where, where does the pipeline run? Because I saw the markers for the pipeline, but they're like across the street.
So the pipeline runs adjacent with the bike path at the very rear of the property, and that's why we were asking for, so you know, so the pipeline changed the rules on us. We did also Lot thirty-nine where Eminem are Eminem car repairs at. I don't know if you caught that or not, but they allowed us to pave on it, the whole nine yards, on part of the easement, okay? When we bought these other two properties, we just assumed that we'd be able to follow forth, forward progress the same way we did the last one. They changed the rules on us, and henceforth why we're doing what we're asking for. It just gives us more space to spread it out and make it look proper without really, with us not telling anyone that that's what we're requesting. It's not affecting anyone's water. I mean, the detention's going straight into the pond, and instead of having twenty foot there of said property, we're asking for five foot, so.
And then on the west side, you said it borders the pipeline?
The west, correct.
Okay, and then...
That would be the rear of the buildings.
The pipeline runs north and south, I take it?
Correct.
Uh, what's the distance from, say, the building to the pipeline itself, you know?
I don't...
I don't know if I saw that in the paper.
It's, I didn't, it's not listed in the blueprints.
No.
I have it, and it's too small for me to read. I apologize, hold on, let me see if I can take a picture and blow it up. If you don't have a bigger copy, no? Sorry. I'm saying fifty-seven feet, from what I understand here. Fifty-seven. Four.
So it's, it's some distance?
Yes.
On the pipeline?
It's just they'd, um... Seven and thirty-five, if I'm not mistaken.
That's fine. So are, are we just looking at the variance between the five and the twenty feet only?
I would say so.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's...
They're just increasing the setback.
Okay, that's... Okay, I'm good.
And that variance you're asking for so that you can maximize the size of the building, correct?
We have two lots, there are Lot thirty-seven, which we're discussing right now, and then I'll be recommending for Lot thirty-eight right behind it. I'm asking less of a side yard on that Lot thirty-eight also, but nowhere near as drastic as this one.
Right.
I'm just trying to shove this building all the way over to the north, where really it doesn't affect anything.
So knowing regulations, why did your engineer make the building fifteen feet bigger than he should have?
Actually, we shrunk it already because of the pipeline, and we're just trying to keep it, we're trying to stay within range of what the BRS development has out there. They're roughly ten thousand square feet buildings. I've built three or four of them out there already. Just trying to stay in track. Like I said, they really throw us a curveball when they would not allow us with that rear to the west there. So we're just trying to maximize and spread it out, but we did cut it down already.
That's, that's, that's my only hangup right now is, I mean, that's three quarters of what our regulations are.
Yes, sir.
And I was out there, I understand, it's, it's, the property on the north side there where you're asking for the reduction in the setback, I agree with you, there's nothing going to be there.
Right.
Except the regulation, that there's a twenty-foot setback on property lines. Who knows what's going to be to the north of you at one point?
Um, the detention pond.
I know, I know.
They cannot build there.
That's the questions I have. I don't know if there's any other questions?
Does that, does that retention pond, does that take in this building? I mean, that retention pond is part of the drainage?
Oh, that I don't know.
Requirement for the building?
That retention pond was built along with the whole entire development to absorb any and all buildings or lots that is said there. Yes, sir. That is correct.
And the foundation's been core tested that it'll support?
Soil boarding, yes, sir. Yep.
All the way up to that five-foot line?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Seeing no other questions on the board, I'll open it to the audience. Anyone like to speak for or against this petitioner? Anyone like to speak for or against this petitioner? And one last time, would anyone like to speak for or against this petitioner? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion. I can't make a motion.
I'll make a motion for Z ten V two zero four two five variance from development standards.
I second the motion.
We have a first and a second for approval of the, uh, variance. Can we get a vote, please?
Jeff Swike?
Yes.
Christopher Mellon, oh. Pete Gipp, yes. William Byers?
Yes.
Tim Fortier?
I'm gonna have to say no.
Three, zero, and one, no.
So it passes?
Yep. Three yes, one absent, one here, and one no.
All right, our next case is Z one one V three dash zero four two five, Regent Bros., uh, lot number thirty-seven, thirty-eight LLC petitioner and owner, located at Lot thirty-eight, uh, Wright Street, Lake County, Indiana. Variance from developmental standard approval on forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square foot in an M-one limited industrial zoning district from section twenty-one dash one seven two B seven to allow stone surface and section twenty-one dash one three seven to reduce the south corner side yard setback from forty to twenty feet. But you, you gotta follow the rules.
Carlos Ruiz, Regent Contractors, uh, nine twelve West Avenue H, Griffith, Indiana. Like I said, owner also of the said property, Lot thirty-eight. Same thing, we'll re, go through it again. We got the paperwork in play for the Buckeye Pipeline. The attorney already said that's really a common factor, so I guess we're here to ask for permission or grant on, instead of a forty yard, we're asking for a twenty side yard on the south side of the property.
Okay. Rita, uh, Sheila, uh, staff?
Petitioner is requesting a variance from development standards from section twenty-one dash one seventy-two B seven to allow for a partial stone surface in lieu of pavement, eighteen foot of gravel on the Buckeye easement, and section twenty-one dash one thirty-seven to reduce the side yard corner setback from forty to twenty in an M-one limited industrial zoning district on forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square foot to allow a flex office warehouse to be built on the property. Petitioner is requesting a variance from the developmental standards because the overall site development potential is significantly limited by the Buckeye Pipeline. The desired site improvements are similar and consistent with the adjacent users' building types and sizes and size utilization. Adjacent use and value will not be adversely affected by the improvement proposed with the increase in property values. The petitioner was deferred on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, and requested to have encroachment agreement in place. The agreement has been recorded in the Lake County Recorder's Office.
Thank you. Do we have any questions on this one, gentlemen?
As far as your, the layout of the second building, it borders to the south street, right?
Yes.
Right, I guess, is that right street?
Right.
Right?
Correct.
Wrong, right, okay. Is there, uh, any openings in the building itself for going into the south of the building?
For actually the south entry, no, sir.
Okay.
No south entry. We have it on the west, and we have it on the north side of the southern, I'm Lot thirty-eight.
How about the, uh, you said the west side?
The west side, we have two overhead doors. I'll call it the back of the building, and then one at the north on the side of the building.
Yeah. And what, what do you assume that would be the traffic going in there?
So what we've done, hopefully you have the most current plan, we have making it, uh, a drive around, so you can get the fire trucks around, all the way around. So tractor trailers, small delivery trucks, et cetera, can go all the way around the building also. And so if they have to back in, they can literally pull through, they don't have to back in off the street. Trying to be safety aware here.
Yeah, I was just thinking of unloading and backing in to the building, it might be a little tight.
Yes, sir, and that's why we literally have, we're gonna try to share the drive on Lot thirty-seven, thirty-eight. They've done that on many of the buildings in BRS. So we'll pull through, and literally the truck could pull forward to the south and back up to the north if necessary, or he can pull around to the building on Lot thirty-eight and deliver in the back.
Okay.
We're trying, like I said, we're trying to be proactive.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
Seeing none, I'll open it to the audience. Would anyone like to speak for or against the petitioner? Would anyone like to speak for or against this petitioner? And one last time, would anyone like to speak for or against this petitioner? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Make a motion for approval of Z eleven V three zero four two five variance from development standards.
I'll second the motion.
We have a first and a second for approval. Can we get a vote, please?
Uh, Jeff Swike?
Yes.
Christopher, um, and Pete Gipp, yes. William Byers?
Yes.
Tim Fortier?
Yes.
Thank you.
Four, zero. One, one absent.
All right, under new business, we have case number Z one four V U three dash zero five two five. Jason Moorhead, Landmark, uh, signed petitioner and owner, Saint Savva's Serbian Orthodox Church, located at nine one nine one Mississippi Street, variance from use approval from section twenty-one dash one eight nine subsection eight on sixty acres in an A-one agricultural zoning district to allow an LED message center.
Good evening, uh, Jason Moorhead Landmark Sign Group. Live in Valparaiso, Indiana. Here representing Saint Savva Church. The church would like to re- rehab their old sign. The, the goal of this is to, uh, take all the fluorescent lamps out of it, put LED lamps in it, put new faces in it, put a fresh coat of paint on it, and also take out the changeable copy board and put in an electronic message center. So trying to make it look nice.
Mr. Gibbs, can you read a staff report?
Comments from a petition requesting a variance of use approval from section twenty-one dash one eighty-nine eight to insert a red message to center on an existing sign in an A-one agriculture zoning district, that two feet by eleven feet LED, LED message center will be inserted at the bottom of the existing sign. Petitioner states that there is nothing around the existing sign to impact the community negatively. Petitioner also states that this is an improvement to an existing sign that will be better, that will better the image of the church in the community. The petition will adverse town events requested.
Thank you. All right, are there any questions on the board?
Okay, you're kind of rehabbing the existing sign, so is it gonna be taller or is it the same footprint?
We are going to add some, uh, four foot to the base of it to raise it up a little bit, so it's, the visibility's a little better for the message center, yes.
It's, it's got a good setback that it won't interfere with any of the traffic on the city. Are you going to be advertising the cemetery also on the sign? Or it's not you, I'm, I apologize.
Um...
I don't think they're gonna advertise the cemetery.
Okay, so that would require a separate sign, then?
No.
I don't think the cemetery has a sign at all.
Okay. Cause that's all the same piece of property, correct? Any other questions?
When is your festival, do you know, July of what?
It's, uh, first week of August.
Oh, okay, great. I've been to, it's a nice festival, so, yes.
Is there electric there now, or do you have to run electric?
Yes, we'll use the power from the existing sign, and actually converting it to an LED, um, lighting and taking the fluorescent lamps out will actually lower the draw of the power.
Fiber optics for the...
No, the sign will, the message center will run off a data connection.
Oh, okay.
So there'll be no fi- fiber optics, fiber optics, um, or Wi-Fi connection, it'll all be data.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I will open it to the audience. Anyone like to speak for or against this petitioner? Would anyone like to speak for or against this petitioner? And last time, anyone like to speak for or against the petitioner? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, case number Z one four V U three oh five two five, reading this without my glasses. For this use for the sign, uh, as designated.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second, can we get a vote, please?
Jeff Swike?
Yes.
Christopher Mellon, absent. Pete Gipp, yes. William Byers?
Yes.
Tim Fortier?
Yes.
Four, zero, one absent.
My wife's Serbian, so I guess I'll have to vote yes.
Thank you, have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Our next case is Z one five V four dash zero four two five. Jamie Roberts and Linda Jones, petitioner and owner.
Linda Jones.
Located at five five zero five Fillmore Street. Variance from developmental standards approval from section twenty-one dash zero, I'm sorry, uh, section twenty-one dash one seven two A to allow a recreational vehicle to be parked in a driveway year-round in an R-two residential zoning district. Staff report, please.
Petitioner is seeking a variance from development standards approval from section twenty-one dash one seventy-two A to allow a recreational vehicle to be parked in a driveway at fifty-five oh five Fillmore Street year-round in an R-two residential zoning district. Section twenty-one dash one seventy-two A states that all recreational vehicles, boats, trailers, campers be stored in another location between the dates of October thirty-first and the following March thirty-first. Petitioner Jimmy Roberts and Linda John submit that their son Trenton Hunt was involved in a car accident that left him disabled with a traumatic brain injury and PTSD. The RV allows Trenton to get away and have some semblance of independence and, and have his personal space while still living at home. The recreational vehicle has been parked at the above address for five years. Petitioner states that their son does not sleep overnight in the recreational vehicle, and there can be no overnight stays in the vehicle. The vehicle cannot be parked on the grass. Petitioner must concrete or asphalt, uh, vehicle parking area. Mr. President and Board of Zoning Appeals, we did have, uh, two remonstrators, neighbors to call, who wanted to remain anonymous that they were against the, um, trailer being parked there, and I have to put it in for the record.
Thank you. All right, I'll bring it to the board for questions.
It's been there five years and nothing was ever done? I don't get that.
Our code enforcement officers are understaffed and overworked.
Where, where?
Use.
Where's the, uh, the trailer been parked for all this time? Has it been parked on the grass or in the driveway?
Partially in the grass and partially on the, uh, driveway. Maybe more or less like one side of it is in the driveway, one side of it was in the grass. But that's been taken care of now, it's just been an asphalt put down in that area where it was partially parked in.
Well, um...
Can we move it closer to the house or something, on the side?
We had, uh, that I don't know, that they have the room for it or not. Ordinances for safety of the public community. We lost a, a Maryville resident to a trailer fire in two thousand nineteen, I believe, because he was staying in it, uh, instead of in the house with his parents during COVID. It's just not a good idea.
Can I say something?
Sure.
We deal with a son that suffers from PTSD, anxiety, depression. He's a wonderful young man. He's smart, he's an honor roll student. He's a mi- he's a member of the National Honor Society. He works hard to do what he do. When he was in the accident, uh, he was there lifted from Indiana into Comer's Children's Hospital. His prognosis was if he lived, he would be a vegetable, he would never walk, talk, see, or hear again. We didn't know there was an ordinance to this. We didn't know there was an ordinance to this, we didn't know it. We brought up twenty thirteen first and it was out there for three years, we never got any complaints and you all never got any calls. But when we brought to twenty twenty two, someone called, they called, last year we came down here, they sent us home and told us, don't worry about it, it's just a missed go home. We got another call again this year. And I just wished. I know what you're talking about as far as fires, a fire can break out in your house. It can ask, we watch him, we we take care of him, we've been taking care of him since he was ten years old, this happened when he was ten and now he's thirty. He can never live on his own and he has to live with us. But he says, Mom, I need to feel some sort of independence where I can go from in here when I want to and go somewhere and be to myself. So I understand you all saying it's dangerous, but like I said, your house can set on fire. So what's the difference? So we watch him, we take care.
I'll stop you right there, the difference is we don't have an ordinance against living in a house.
I know, but I know, I'm saying it, but I'm just saying that it can happen. I'm just saying, a fire can break out and you could be setting in your car and your car can explode, you know, I'm just saying.
Correct.
Stuff happens. But I'm trying to tell you that we watch him. But if we can't keep it there, then give us a chance to find somewhere to move and we'll 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 go.
It's just if if we were to give you, which we haven't voted on yet, the permission to do this, and there were to be a tragedy?
We wouldn't hold.
Now, we gave you the oppor, we told you you could do it and it becomes somewhat our responsibility. And I'll let you guys decide, but I'm not willing to take that responsibility.
I just wanted a better understanding, you said that you had a trailer there, did you get a newer one or a bigger?
We got a new one, we had a twenty thirteen there, nobody called. Then we got a twenty twenty two within three years after we got that and got him a more updated one where it's, you know, really nice and really comfortable. And then that's when we started getting the calls.
So is is the new one larger than the other one?
Not really, it's just better, it's way better looking, it's it's beautiful.
But it's got pullouts on it?
Yes, the other one had pullouts.
Oh, they did, okay. I went by and took a look at it because I was kind of interested in myself and I I understand your story. I've got a son too and I would feel the same way.
It's it's my son and and I know that would change his life if he knew that he's been do, he's been having this place to go and to be, so if we take it away from him, then I'm dealing with probably issues of depression, hospitalization, and I and I haven't had to deal with this with that since he's been there, being able to do what he does.
Right, that's going to end in terms of instead of having the phone call counseling.
You would be allowed to have it there except for the months of October through April.
That's a long time for him. My son hasn't left the house, if we say, would you say a hundred times since he was ten years old?
No.
He doesn't go anywhere, he doesn't have friends. He stayed at himself and he mind his business and when I say he's a good kid, he's a good kid.
Nobody's questioning that, really not.
How about?
I understand your hardship, I mean, I I couldn't imagine going through what you're going through.
I was just going to ask the question about the utilities, you get in the winter time, it has to have heat and of course, air conditioning in the summer, so do you have electric run to it, is there a gas furnace in it?
Well, propane.
It's propane heat.
And electric, he has propane and and electric.
Anything against the town ordinance or village code as far as the recreational vehicle and leaving?
Recreational vehicles are not supposed to be lived in on your property. That's that's what I explained to the petitioners. You you're supposed to be able to park them there during the summer months when you take the vehicle out to wherever you go and do your hookup at, when you go on a vacation or whatever, that's that was the purpose for the ordinance. And then after, so it's supposed to have no kind of hookup, no kind of electric in your driveway, you get the hookup, I'm just saying to the petitioners, you get the hookup when you go on your vacation and you go to the park. And then when it gets to be winter, we don't want them stored in the front of the house, you either have to store it in the rear of the property on a hard surface or you have to take it to a storage facility. So that was, the the ordinance was never designed for people who to to live or participate in the vehicle when there is in the driveway. Because as as we we don't have enough code enforcement to take over, to go through every place where they should, where they go to, but when when they do find someone that they feel may be staying in the property, they will stay on it because of what happened with the tragedy that he said about.
Well, nobody ever came for the three years it was out there.
Yes, ma'am.
So I don't know what neighbors complained, I hope they step up because I actually love all my neighbors and I'm shocked.
I don't, so just to let you know, as I have to do my job to say that someone remonstrates, but both of the neighbors don't have anything against you or your son.
So why wasn't, why wasn't the call put in when we had to twenty thirteen for the three years?
I don't know, I'm just.
That's what I'm saying, so I don't, I don't, I'm I'm not disrespecting you, I don't need anybody now to say that that's all why they called, they didn't have nothing against us or anything, that's not true. And everybody sitting here knows that's not true.
So I sent letters out and at the bottom of the letter, it says, if you're desirous to remonstrate against this, you can, that's what the bottom of the letter says. And that's all it is, is nothing for you, it is just a law. Every every petitioner here tonight had that on their letter.
I understand that's the law, but I'm saying, it's awfully strange that it stayed out there for three years and nobody said a word. And now all of a sudden, when you get a twenty twenty two that looks like a house, now somebody want to say something. It's not fair. Jealousy, envy, strife, whatever it may be, it's not fair.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to stop you at at that because now we're we're making, going way off course with where we're at.
But it is, sir.
We're looking at whether or not you should have a trailer parked on your property and allow someone to live in it year round.
We're not, we're not allowing anybody to live in it year round, what we're trying to do is be able to park it there year round because we cannot pull it around to the back because there's no space in the back of the house for that, okay? It's only like in that little spot of the driveway where we extend the driveway a little bit more over so we can pull it right there and still be able to utilize the driveway back and forth, okay? Because you can't come around in the back of the property because there's no area back there in the back where you can do that. Even if it was to be a hard surface put back there, it wouldn't be able to fit back there. Because then I'll be crunching on this neighbor, that neighbor and so forth.
Mr. Williams.
Are there any other questions in the board?
Guess I got one more, sorry. You you said that, and I'm not sure what I'm going to vote for or against, but if they did say no, what options do you have? Do you have another option in mind?
Give me a chance to move.
I don't have no other options.
Give me a chance to move, find me another house and I will be gone, but I'm not taking my son and chance in his health and taking him and putting him, pushing him in a whole situation and I got him where he's stable and we haven't had to take him to the doctor for anything. So just give us a chance to get us, get us out here and I'll be gone, we'll be gone.
Is it possible to add on to your house?
We don't need anything added on to the house, it's him.
That's not affordable right now, I cannot, I cannot.
It's not that, he don't want to be in the house with us. Sir, we got four bedrooms, about probably eleven rooms in the house. It's that he don't want to be in the house, he wants to feel independent.
Okay.
He wants to feel like I can get up and move, he doesn't drive, we have to basically take him everywhere that he wants to go and we take him to school, pick him up, we do all of that. He's dependent on us, but he want an independence.
Okay.
And I don't know if you all kind of understand what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
But just to think about what he'd go through, I'm hurt now because I know how far we brought him.
I've worked with students with TBI and so I understand your situation, it's very difficult, I know, I definitely know what you're talking about.
And I feel that the neighbor that did this, God help him, whoever did it, God help them because this was not fair. I told my neighbors what was going on with my son, it's not a neighbor that know that they couldn't come to my door and say something. It's not one, I'm a friendly neighbor, I love all my neighbors and I forgive the ones who did, whoever did it, I forgive them for doing it. But for now, it's about my son, so whatever y'all decision is, I got a bad bad, but you got to give me a chance to get up out of there.
Any other questions in the board? Seeing none, I'll open it to the audience, anyone like to speak for or against this petitioner?
I'm short, councilwoman Shauna Haynes Edwards, or two, these are my residents and I have gone by their property. That was my first question to them was, well, my first question to Ms. Shauna was, is there another place that they could put this trailer? So I did go by the residence, there is no other place for the trailer to go. We do understand that it is not safe for Trent to stay there year round, but he does not. I actually saw the trailer and it is somewhere for him to find his independence. He does not sleep there, he goes back in the house at the, when he's done with the trailer and so we're just asking that we can fix an ordinance to where this child, well, this, he's now grown, but have the ability to have some type of independence and no, he's not staying there, so whatever neighbor said that they were watching him sleep there, what type of time do you have to monitor this baby, this young man, I apologize, to say that he sleeps there all night? You need something better else to do with your time, I've been by there several times to monitor myself and no, this young man is not sleeping in that. And we do understand that there was a tragedy in twenty nineteen because someone was living in a trailer home, but this is not the case with this young man. He goes in the house at night, he goes to sleep in his bedroom to and from, this is what, this is where his sense of freedom is. And I would hope as the town of Meriville that we would have some type of way to help this young man and this family cope through this. This is hard, it's a tragedy for them, this isn't something that they wish to happen to them, this is something that was a freak accident and with that being said, we need to figure out something. Yes, we have these ordinances for food trucks and trailer homes and boats, but if they comply, which they did, which put the asphalt down to not have it on the grass and it's not in anybody else's property, what does it matter for them to be able to have their child safe and able to have a sense of freedom and independence while he goes through, while he goes through this ordeal that has forever and will forever impact his life?
As a councilwoman, don't you think you have some responsibility to report violations of the town codes?
Absolutely. And we did just that and it was on the grass, which we told, told them that it could not be on the grass, they needed to get the asphalt or concrete put down and they complied. And we have way more abandoned, blighted properties and code enforcements that needs to be taken care of other than this young man and him having a sense of independence.
Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you.
Me and my wife, we live across the street from them and just like what they were saying that they had a trailer there three years ago, nobody never said nothing. Now all of a sudden, they get a twenty two, somebody saying something about it, it don't bother us, period. They're very good neighbors, I would definitely hate to see them move from there. Their son is very good, he's nice, very respectful. And what they are saying, they are saying the truth for what they're talking about. Kind of hurts us too, you know, because, you know, we got other people that's on our block that things need to be taken care of. But them, they're not no trouble. We feel for them too. We don't know who told on them or whatever, but again, you know, they had a trailer there three years ago, nobody never said nothing, but all of a sudden, they get a new one, somebody says things.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience would like to speak for or against this petitioner? And one last time, would anyone like to speak for or against this petitioner? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to defer this for thirty days, we got one member missing and I'd like to review this and see if there's a solution to this.
We have a motion for a deferral for thirty days and a second, can you get a vote, please?
Jeff Swike?
Yes.
Pete Gip, yes? William Byers?
Yes.
Tim Fortier?
Yes.
You'll have to see Sheila about the next date of our meetings, that gives you another thirty days. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next case is Z one six E nine dash zero five two five. Neder Trade Well petitioner and KS Etiquel, sorry about that, GK owner located at six zero four nine Broadway, special exemption approval from section twenty one. I'm sorry, special exemption approval from section twenty one one three six on twenty two point three zero nine acres in a C two commercial zoning district to allow an indoor dog park.
Hi, my name is Nedra Treadwell, address eleven eleven Lyons Street, Hammond, Indiana. I, I'm here with a heavy heart right now. Today, when Paula called to make sure that I was coming in for this meeting, I was at the vet, the clinic, and we had to put my fur baby down. And she was an inspiration for this project. So it's really with a heavy heart, I'm doing this and I asked that you bear with me, but her name is Foofy. I had three dogs when I came upon this. In twenty sixteen, I started the company called Pafuche's. It is a play on my three dogs' names, the P A is for passion, the F O O is for Foofy, the one that passed today, and Chi, which is Chico. And she, which is Chico, he passed about four years ago. So it's called Pafuchees. And it started off, sold proprietorship as a dog bakery, treats that I sold at flea markets in Illinois. And it moved on from there to dog safety kits. I had a property where there wasn't a lot of light on the roads at night, and so I created these kits where the walker of the dog would have a wristband. The dogs had harnesses and leashes that all lit up, different colors. And so I made them visible on the roads, which were usually dark. I have a very big love for people and their animals and their dogs. So yeah, so that, this business has been in place since 2016. And I always would take my dogs to the dog parks. And one day, we're out there, and the weather was getting kinda bad. And I'm like, wow, it would be really cool if the dogs had an indoor place where they could run and play away from the, the bad weather, the hot weather. Some people can't stand, you know, intense heat. Some animals can't stand intense heat. I don't know if anyone here are animal owners, but if it's raining outside, can't go to the dog park. Snowing outside, you know, it was always the inclement weather. So, I said one day, it would be so cool to have an indoor space that they can go to, that they can frolic, they can play, that they can socialize, they can exercise. And yeah, that's when I thought of it. So, I saw the property. I was able to, by blessing of inheritance and saving up money, able to start looking at a place. And 6049 Broadway is an ideal location for what I wanna do. The main reason why I like it is it's kinda set off to the side because there will be dogs in there. So, it's set off to the side. It's not really, you know, high traffic. We'll even ensure that everything is done at that end, and we won't have to worry about messing with the other businesses that are in the strip mall. Yeah, it's, also, it's an open, it's an open slate. I mean, it's just a canvas just waiting to be decorated, and that's pretty much what needs to happen. It's open space. We can set up, you know, the flooring, the gates and all those things, and really make it a nice, safe environment for owners and their pets. So, that is Pafuchees.
Okay, thank you. Staff report, please.
Petitioners requesting special exception approval for an indoor dog park in a C2 community commercial zoning district. Petitioner Nedra Treadwell seeks to open Pafuchees at 6049 Broadway. Pafuchees, I'm probably saying it wrong, will be a designated space where dogs can play, run, and interact with other dogs in a controlled environment. Pafuchees will offer soft flooring, agility equipment, and a park-like setting. This dog park will cater to all dogs and all sizes. Rules of the park will be prominently displayed. Attendance will have, will be available on the floor. Ample seating will be offered for the patrons of the park. Comprehensive cleaning of the park will take place daily. Petitioner submits that Pafuchees will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, and morals or the general welfare in accordance with the comprehensive plan. The owner is responsible for the outside walkway additionally. The owner will provide waste receptacles and pay, and pay all utilities. This address is at the end of the unit, which will allow ample parking for patrons and their pets. There will be five employees, three full-time and two part-time. Three PM, from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. The dog waste will be picked up by owners. Assistance is provided for more detailed cleanup, restocking of all supplies such as poop bags and hand wash. Sanitizers will be done to keep an indoor park clean and organize. The outside will be kept clean and neat. There will be a soundproof wall on the shared tenant wall. For this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Thank you. I will bring it to the board for questions.
Okay, well, I'm sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
My son just lost his dog last month, so that's fifteen years. So I know exactly.
She was sixteen.
Yeah, going through. I looked through this a couple different times, and the only thing I don't see is like outside view of the building or where the building's at in relationship to the streets. Have you been by there?
Across the street from Andrian, correct?
Strack and Bent Hills.
Strack and Bent Hills.
It's in the plaza. It's where the lady came for the daycare. In the plaza over there. It's in the same vicinity.
Correct.
Yes.
Do you require any information as far as if they've got vaccinations for rabies, kennel cough?
I do plan to eventually offer daycare, and those things will be required at that time. For just a dog park, no, not, it's, we're not doing that for just that. But I do have plans. And if it is so said that I should do it, I will definitely offer it. But yeah, I was looking to do that in the future.
Didn't we approve something very similar a few years ago? Did it ever come to fruition? Because we had talked about how they were gonna clean it.
Yeah, Danny, Danny has the doggy grooming service with the daycare. It's at the plaza across the street where Ruler Foods is. He's still there.
He's still there? And we've had no problems from him, no complaints from his surrounding neighbors?
No.
But he was, he was, what did, forgot how he addressed himself, as a stylist to the dogs or something.
Right. He won the prize in the parade.
He said he had people coming from all over the state to come have their dogs groomed with him. So, it might be somebody you can go talk to across the street.
Yes, yes, definitely. We've been to that location. We went in to just see how they had it set up and everything, so I know exactly where it is.
People that are bringing their dogs to this type of thing are respecting their dogs. And usually, the people they're with, it's not like they're letting them run loose outside and really don't care what they're, I was just listening today to a lady in Harvey that was mauled by two dogs. And I've lost, lost part of a foot, and the animal control said it was her fault for being in that area. So anyhow, it has nothing to do with this, anyhow.
I work over there.
You saw it?
No, I said I used to work in Harvey and teach over there years ago, yeah.
So, okay. Any other questions from the board? So we've got a very reasonable price at five dollars a visit or fifty for the month. Are you gonna be able to pay your staff and keep this place open at those prices?
Yeah, we, I always say, I'm taking on the, the feeling of, if we, feel the dreams. If you build it, they will come. So we're expecting, this is, it's a new thing. It's popular in warm areas, like in Vegas, they have a couple. Florida has a couple, but they're really big in Canada for some reason. I don't know. But yeah, those are the prices, but I believe it's negotiable. I'm thinking a little differently on that, but yeah. To get them in the door, we may start maybe the first month offering something like that and letting them know that it may increase. Having decided that, again, we do want to do the doggy daycare at some point, which will be a totally different price scale. So, we do have ideas, and yes, we do feel that we'll be able to sustain and upkeep and pay the bills.
Then there's no regulations on disposal of waste material?
No. As Danny, the dog groomer, told me that most of the time when the dogs come there, they, they, nothing happens. It's very seldom that they have an accident. I don't know what that means, because...
That is a thing. Most dogs are trained not to go inside. So, when they're indoors, you may, the main thing that I, through my research, is that you will have them, the territorial ones might, you know, lift a leg because of territory. And we do, we have protocol in place to handle all of that. So yeah, but that is true, that generally, they don't go inside. But if they were to, we will have the signage there. We will have the attendance there to ensure that the owners, just like in an outdoor park, will pick up their waste and dispose of it properly.
Okay.
When do you plan on opening?
We're looking at fall. We need time to get it together. So, with the structure with our landlord, we're looking at like a four-month window. So we're thinking October, which is a good time because we're going into the winter months and the weather changes and so on and so forth. So, we want, we wanna have the time to do, you know, our marketing. We know the different, we know not to put any flyers and stuff out, things like that. But we do want to attack social media and all those things to get ready, so we need a little time.
Do people, they have to say with their dog, they can't drop dogs off, right?
Not at this point. They cannot drop dogs off. When we do the daycare, that'll be a feature. Also, someone, they suggested it, and I thought it might be cool, but they said sometimes when they have to go somewhere, they only want the dog to be somewhere for like, you know, a couple of hours or so. They're going to the movies, don't want their dog to be alone. So, they were asking if it would be like, you know, drop-off services. I'm thinking of that as well for the dogs. It will be a designated, set apart space from the regular in-and-out patrons. They will be treated differently because of the, you know, the way they're coming in, but it is possible.
What's the capacity and the number of dogs that can be in there?
That I do not know. I do not know that at this time. I think code enforcement, they're gonna, I'm gonna be friends with them, and they'll let us know what the rules are for it. But I will abide by whatever they say.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll take it to the audience, which there is one here. Anyone like to speak for or against this petitioner?
Okay.
For or against, for or against? And we have three noes. So I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve case number Z16E90525 for this use and at this location only.
I second the motion.
We have a first and a second. May we get a vote, please?
Jeff Switek?
Yes.
Pete Gep?
Yes.
William Byers?
Yes.
And Tim Fortier?
Yes.
Good luck to you. Can we get a motion for dismissal?
I'll make a motion.
I second the motion.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? You're not opposing, are you?
No, I'm not.